Ladies and members of the City Council, please attend to call meeting of the City Council to be held in the Six Mile Conference Room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, September 9th, 2014, for the Columbus Public Work Session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the Mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mr. Mead? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Senator?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yeah, we need to close session first.
Yes, sir.
Take us in.
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 for the following purpose: consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff pertaining to matters of actual and probable litigation as permitted under subsection A7.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Mead? Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Senator?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
Ready? All right. We have Andrews with the Virginia Port Authority to give us a briefing on the fact that port activity is coming back to Portsmouth Marine Terminal effective the 15th of September. So, here we are. Would you come on up, introduce your colleague, please?
I will. Hello.
Hello.
How's it going, man? Doing well. Good to see you all this evening and good to see you in my new capacity. I also have my colleague Sarah McCoy. Sarah is also new to the port and she'll be our manager of local government and community relations. So, going forward, you'll probably see a little bit more of her than me, but of course, either of us are happy to do whatever we can for you. I understand we have some technical difficulties with the presentation, but you all should have a copy of it in front of you. It was built before we had the challenges with weather yesterday, so there's probably a little bit more detail than we have time for this evening. I'll try to be brief and expeditious with your time, but if there's something in there that I don't cover and you have some questions about it, please stop me and we can spend a little time talking about that. So, the first couple of slides, first two or three slides, really just deal with a little bit of a reorganization that we're going under and really trying to redirect the energies at the port. And we're focusing on new values. We've incorporated those into a new mission statement that's all under the leadership. We've got some new members of our Board of Commissioners and, of course, John Reinhardt who joined the port in February. And so, there's a lot of energy behind that and really trying to ensure that the port is operating as the asset and the driver it is for the region and for the Commonwealth. And we've already started to see some results from that. 2014, fiscal year 2014, ending on June 30th was a record year for the port. Our container volume was up 6.5% over the previous year, over 140,000 TEUs. And this is, we think, really good news for the port and for the region. And that is more or less in line with what we're seeing in other ports on the East Coast with our competitor ports as well. And that's going out. It's a fairly balanced portfolio of exports and imports, and that share has been pretty consistent over the last three years. And 34% of that is going out by rail, 4% of it's going by barge, that's primarily up to the Port of Richmond, and then 62% by trucks. And that is the ratio. You've seen in the past some numbers where that ratio may change. For now, we're actually trying to keep that ratio more or less where it is. And there are a number of factors with that on that it takes to get boxes onto rail and the time on terminal that we're really trying to address. The most efficient way is to get it out by truck, so we're really trying to keep that portfolio more or less the same right now. The next several slides really had to do with why we're seeing that increase on the East Coast and it's dealing with a number of factors, largely driven because container ships themselves are getting larger. This is driven by the Panama Canal, which is, of course, expanding as you all have seen, but we're already seeing those ships haul here. That has been delayed, but the ship lines had already made preparations for them, and so we're seeing that activity come through the Suez Canal, which really isn't that much further. And so, they're already coming through, we're already seeing those calls. That's causing the volume to increase across the board, and we're well-prepared for that with our channel depths, which are as deep or deeper than anywhere on the East Coast. So, we're seeing definitely our fair share of that volume. As you go through the next several slides, just show our statewide footprint. Of course, we have the terminals here in Hampton Roads. We also lease and operate the Port of Richmond, and then we own and operate the Virginia Inland Port in Front Royal, Virginia, as well, really making a big system that's an asset for the Commonwealth. I'm not going to spend any time on the Virginia Inland Port and the Port of Richmond unless you have some questions about those operations, but that's a barge service to Richmond, rail service to Front Royal, and then it's picked up by trucks there, which really expands our footprint and takes trucks off the road and makes it a more efficient operation. I mentioned the, and I'm just going to skip right to the NIT, VIG, and PMT slides. I mentioned the increased cargo volumes, and that has really put strain on Norfolk International Terminals and Virginia International Gateway, formerly APM. Those two are operating at about 95% capacity. And so, we're trying to administer that volume as best as possible, but at that level of capacity, we don't have any efficiencies and we're starting to run into some congestion issues. And that's really necessitating the need to reopen PMT, which we are very excited about. We think it's a great opportunity for the port, it's a great sign of health for the port, and it's a good sign for the city of Portsmouth as well. The key information for you is that we're looking at about 75,000 to 100,000 containers coming into that port annually. That equates to about 325 trucks in and out the gates on a daily basis. The gates will be open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It'll be a little bit different than it has been in the past, or the terminals that you see operating. This is going to be a wheeled operation. That means that it's going to come off of the ship's shore crane and be dropped straight onto a chassis, and then we'll use yard hustlers to move it around the terminal, and the over-the-road truck will come in and pick it up straight off that chassis and drive it off the terminal. And the reversal will happen for an export box. They'll drive it in, they'll leave the box on the chassis, and they'll pick up their new box and drive off, and we'll use a yard hustler to move it around. The yard hustle will bring it under the crane, the crane will pick it up and put it on the ship.
That makes it easier for the truckers, right?
It makes it easier for the truckers, it makes it a more efficient operation for them. It takes up more space, so that's the limitation, but it is a quicker operation, it's a more efficient operation. And so, what you won't see, except for on the empty container yard, are stacked containers on that terminal.
Is there ingress and egress going to be from the little squirt around that goes there about what used to be the police?
Yes, so we have our police building right there, on the railroad avenue, right off of 164. So, behind that, there's a set of security gates, and that will be the gated operation for security. And then, as you get past the security gate, there's another set of gates, and that's where they'll check in for, and get their ticket for where they're going to drop off their box or where they're going to pick up their box.
So, there's no truck going into Port Norfolk?
No trucks going in.
Just coming in around that little?
Yes, ma'am.
Play believe.
Yes, ma'am.
Andrew, while we're on the subject of trucks, I was at a PPIC presentation last week, and it was projected by the presentation by the ports that that truck traffic would equate to over 350 trucks daily. My question is, where are they going to be going? They going east, they going west, and how are we going to handle that influx of truck traffic?
So, the numbers I have are 325, but that's in the same ballpark?
Still ballpark.
In the same ballpark, so don't need to quibble. I can't tell you exactly where they're going. They're going to their customers. I expect the vast majority of them will end up getting onto 164 and go west.
That's a lot of truck traffic, additional truck traffic.
I don't know that it's actually going to be any additional truck traffic. Realize that those container ships are already calling either NIT or VIG as-is. If they're calling VIG, they're getting onto the same road, and if they're calling NIT, many of them are riding down to the Midtown Tunnel and getting onto 164 as well.
So, you're telling me this is not new traffic?
Right. We are diverting four ships that are currently calling between NIT and VIG and diverting their ports of call to PMT in order to take that congestion that's at our two facilities right now and relieve it by a little bit.
At PPIC, it was presented, and maybe the words were wrong, it was additional truck traffic.
It's new traffic to PMT because PMT's been closed for four years, but it is, we're taking four existing vessel services?
That makes a big difference.
To PMT.
Okay, we're going to save the tape.
Well, you had to have some type of increase on your truck traffic or rail if you had 6.5% increase from last year?
The share, that breakdown of 34% rail, 62% truck, those shares are what we're trying to keep in line. So, we've had increase in both rail and truck and barge as well. The total traffic has increased, absolutely.
As the ships get larger and we get more, so we're looking for more increase of this year?
Yeah, July, so I mentioned that 2014, fiscal year 2014, was a record year for us. July was a record month. August broke the July record. So, we are, business is booming, and that's, like I said, that's a sign of health for us, but that's putting, that's what's causing the limitations and the need to reopen PMT.
So, we should be looking for the increase then?
Looking for an increase, but it would, an increase that you would see anyway. Yeah.
And my other question on the truck traffic, do we have a good handle on where that traffic does go when it leaves the port? Is it as simple as it's just headed out of town on 164 or through the Midtown Tunnel or Downtown Tunnel, or is it meandering through the city in some shape or form? Do we have a good handle on that? The reason why I ask, our roads are taking a beating?
Yes, they are.
From trucks. And obviously, the biggest source of truck traffic is the ports. My question's to you, John.
We do have truck routes. And hopefully, with the completion of the MLK, it will alleviate the problem of the trucks trying to get to either Route 58 or getting on 264 because they'll have an interstate quality way to get there. There are severe fines if a truck is on a prohibited street. I mean, those fines are not something to laugh at. But, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The traffic goes generally speaking two ways. It goes to the heartland of America, and it can go by rail or by truck, and the heartland is anything that's west of here, to Illinois, Ohio, wherever. The other are to distribution warehouses that are located in the Hampton Roads area, like in Alawite or off of Loomis Road and Suffolk, if you're going out Route 58 from downtown on the way to Holland. And what the port tries to do is locate those distribution warehouses within 30 miles of the wharf so that they can get at least three turns per day, as they call it, picking up a container, going to the distribution warehouse and coming back and get three of those trips in per day. There was a study done four or five years ago by the port that said they needed in the next 20 years another 60 million square feet of warehouse space. I don't know if that's still your projection, but that's a lot of warehouse space to ring the port. We are a maritime city. 50% of the assets of the Virginia Port Authority are in Portsmouth. PMT and VIG, and then you have NIT in Norfolk and Newport News. And when Crane Island comes online, you'll have three fifths of the facilities in Portsmouth. So, the fact that the containers are increasing is a good thing, and we really do need to get them off the road.
Okay, thanks. There is a map in your presentation, and it probably doesn't show up well trunked down here, but when you get the electronic version, which I'm sure the city manager and the staff can afford you, it really breaks out what is going where on the terminal. So, the northeast corner is what's being leased to Skanska for construction of the Midtown Tunnel. That middle section is the part that we're reopening. The rear section, the most, the northwest section, is being left available for future expansion. Our goal is still for PMT to be a mixed-use terminal, so not strictly a cargo container facility. We expect there to be break bulk of whatever opportunity that may provide, row-row, like the Chrysler operation that we had earlier this year. We are still exploring those opportunities. We think that our opening of this terminal is actually going to be beneficial to those because it will lower the startup costs needed to get those operations onto the terminal. We are bearing the cost of most of the security upgrades and gate procedures that are necessary to do that. So, when a company or customer or client wants to come onto the terminal for those kinds of operations, that will already be in place. So, we think it'll be easier to find those kind of operations to take place. We're spending $7 million to get it back up and running. Most of that money is going to be spent on the berth. That berth is 50 years old, and so there's some structural deficiencies that need to be repaired. So, that's the bulk of it. One of those contracts, and the bulk of that contract has not yet been let. One of the contracts that have been let, a Portsmouth company has won the bid and is doing a contract worth 3/4 of a million dollars and is doing that work. So, you should be proud of your companies that are doing that. As I mentioned, it will be open next week on September 15th is when it's going to be open to start receiving export cargo by truck. So, trucks will start coming in and dropping off their containers next week. The first week of October is when the first vessel will haul. We're somewhat dependent on the shipping lines for the exact date, so we don't know that yet, but it will be the first week of October. We do plan to have a grand opening event that day when the ship comes in, and we would love for the mayor and the city council to participate in that grand opening event. We do think it's an exciting time for the port. I do have one other piece of information to share with you that we just distributed today, we just finalized today. That is a letter that went out to the trucking community with information about the reopening and how they can operate, and it has some information that I thought you might find helpful as well.
I have a question, yes, I'm concerned, I see it happening. The cut-off that comes through Greenwood Drive to cut out through the industrial area that runs on Cavalier Boulevard out to Military Highway, there's a lot of truck traffic that comes through that comes by some of the residential homes in that corridor, and it should not be. At one time, there were not as many trucks cutting through, but it does have an impact on the quality of life of residents who are living in that corridor. That's a Greenwood Drive corridor and that Cavalier Boulevard corridor because they can cut through and head out to Military Highway where the industrial area is, and that's a disadvantage to all of the residents.
That's outside of our terminal, so I'm not?
That's a police issue.
Well, I think we need to address it.
Familiar with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we need to address it.
I know this might be an off-matter, but as far as security in the port's concerned, homeland security and all those things that factor in, how is that coming? How is that happening?
So, we're using our sworn port police officers to do security, then we also have some contracted security guards to supplement our sworn officers, and then we have actually taken some Customs and Border Patrol assets from NIT to PMT. Every box, every export box has to be screened for radiation, so we're taking some of that radiation screening capability from NIT to PMT in the short term until permanent screening can be constructed there.
Any other question? Before you wrap up, and thanks for coming in and giving us this briefing, and congratulations on your job. The whole piece that we did with the automobiles with Chrysler going back and forth to China, we knew that was short-term, but there was also some other future work that possibly could come from that. Any updates on that?
There's nothing specific at this time. We are still interested in pursuing those kinds of opportunities. We think it's a great fit for PMT. The governor has been to China and met with Pasha just within the last few months to explore. Pasha's the logistics company that arranged that, and so we are met with them to look for future opportunities, and we're excited about the possibility of more of that coming. That's why when you look at that map, that northwest portion of the terminal is really being reserved for those kinds of opportunities that could still come in without impacting the container operation as well.
Okay, thanks, Andrew, very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is a briefing on the proposed National Guard armory expansion and its impact on one of our industrial parks in the city. James?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Here to give you an update on the proposed expansion of the National Guard, Redditch Center, very dangerous Lay Road, and it also involves the physical closure of Lay Road. If you're looking at the industrial park, the Lay Road Industrial Park, this is the Redditch Center, this is Ponderosa, this is the Hattsville Neighborhoods, Airline Boulevard, the Railroad Tracks, Ballard Road, this is Lay Road right here. You have some businesses here, here, some businesses here.
Where's Elmhurst?
Elmhurst is?
Right here.
Right here. Right here.
Yeah.
Along the, you can't see it because of the?
Regional jail is up here.
Have some businesses here, can see a little bit better on this next slide. See a few more trucking businesses on the backside, the regional jail, Pond for the regional jail. This is Bill's Marine and Hyman Road, which would be the access coming in to Ballard Road off of there.
Everybody all in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, this is the existing conditions of the Redditch Center as exists today. You see some of the existing buildings, some parking, areas for training, and area for private vehicles. Their 2013 Redditch Center Master Transportation Plan identifies this site. The uniform facilities criteria, which basically are their minimum anti-terrorism standards, show that this facility has some site issues as far as control perimeter and standoff distances. And it also identifies that Lay Road, it's been closed since 1964. This is the street closure application from our planning department that shows when that action took place with City Council. This is actually the parcel view of the facility you see here in black. You see that portion of Lay Road enclosed within that parcel boundary.
Has everybody been out there? Are you familiar? This is what you would typically call the armory?
Yes.
Yeah, and this looks like a motor pool operation?
Right.
And this is the road that's in question, which is not really a road. It's not a road that's in our system. It's been closed since 1964, although it's well-maintained.
Yes.
The road that I cut?
This shows?
I do too.
This shows the proposed expansion. You see a building addition, they shift around some things as far as training and privately-owned vehicles. There's the expansion of the military parking, or the military vehicles. In that, you see that the center is basically the expansion to the northwest and southwest boundaries, and they do some perimeter controls and hardening of the exterior to meet their anti-terrorism standards. There are some constraints that happens when you close Lay Road, basically access, interest in addressing those businesses. On the business part, they're affected, response time for emergency services, condition of Ballard Road, there's some other issues that were expressed to us last week. Council Moody and I, along with Captain Lee Cherry, met with several, I'd say about 10 businesses. We got some input from them on some of their concerns, some of which we were already working on, some of which were new to us, and we're working through that list to address those and come up with a plan, how we can accommodate as much of those as possible. As far as the next steps, we'll continue to work through that list of concerns and develop the appropriate plans. We'll work with the National Guard to have a town hall meeting where they can actually show their project to those people and to any other citizens enforcement to answer any questions, and also work with the businesses on any letters of concern they might have to help them, you know, where they send certain letters and what they need to include in some of those letters.
I guess the probably the biggest issue is if they did actually cut off the access of Lay Road, that whole back road Ballard and going across that track behind Bill's Marine, it just seemed so insufficient for the trucks and a lot of that traffic that comes back there, because there are a couple of trucking companies that have been back there and that's, just the impact of that is probably where all the noise is coming from.
James, before you answer, put the first aerial back up, because that's what you're really talking about. Next one.
Put this right here?
No, the next one. Well, that shows?
What was your black square?
And you're right. I mean, a tractor trailer truck will get hung up there. One option would be to flatten that?
Elevation.
Right. You have some preliminary estimates on that?
Right. We've been working with one of our consultants to look at that grade over the railroad crossing. We've been in talks with CSX, and I showed John a preliminary idea of what it might involve to improve that crossing earlier this afternoon.
And even if they fix that, with that train coming through there as frequent as it is, it could be probably disruptive as well. Yeah, that's the one I was talking about there. But, Mr. Moody?
Well, Mayor, I think you're on the mark. I met with a group of owners out there, and so you'll know there are about 340 employees involved that work in the eight businesses there, as well as a church. But, met with our engineer, James, and city manager, John Rowe, and toured the roads out there, and it's not quite as simple as lowering the grade and improving Ballard Road, which Ballard Road, by the way, is, most of it is in the CSX easement. And you also have companies there that handle hazardous materials, and they can't be left with one entrance and exit. Plus, in addition, it would, I think, be interest to the employees' safety if they have a medical issue and that train is blocking the crossing, which it does a couple of times a day, I'm told, that could be a very bad situation. So, I would like to see us express these concerns as a council to the guard, to our contact there. And speaking of the contact, I think the business owners are being told one thing, and we're being told another, that they're being told that these aren't definite plans, you know, smile, be happy, it may or may not happen. I think we're being told something more definitive than that. So, we need to flush that out, find out what the real plans are, and? So we need to flush that out, find out what the real plans are, and have that town hall meeting and formally express our problems with the closure of that road, because we can't afford, as a city, to lose eight companies and representing over 340 employees. We just can't do it, especially when we're talking about expanding our non-taxable base. We're already at 53 percent. National Guard takes some more. They don't pay taxes, so we need to fight this.
Mr. Meeks?
Because the road already closed. I mean, basically what you said in the very beginning, this road is already closed. And by them leaving it open, that's been a benefit for the business and the people that use the road, right? Only, I went out there yesterday and asked the guy that is a water tank up at the top left.
Over there, right there to the left.
I spent about two hours with Jake. And only thing I could come up with, it's a paper road that goes down, and the next road beside, I don't know the name of the road.
Talking about Ponderosa?
Ponderosa, the full set. Right here.
Yeah, that would be the only thing I could really see that we have options. It's a paper road that ends, I mean, it goes all the way down.
The only trouble with Ponderosa, when we took the tour, there's some water mains, large water mains that are buried under that danny. And plus, I think a portion of that is on CSX property as well. Is that correct?
Correct. That's all right away. And the three transmission water mains coming into town do come in that corridor. They're very shallow. They can actually see the top of the pipe and the bottom of the ditch line.
What was Lay Road?
This portion...
And they closed it in 1960?
From here to here belongs to the city. This is part of the National Guard property.
And as John explained to me, normally, if it wasn't government, even though it's been closed and owned by somebody else, it'd be prescriptive use, I think is the word. It's been used for 15 years, but obviously, it's a government road, so the law doesn't apply.
I mean, it goes back to due diligence, those people that do business back there.
But we've been maintaining that road, haven't we, John?
All the way through.
I don't think so.
Trying to hold up back there to maintain.
Well, no, we haven't been maintaining Ballard, because that's full of potholes, but Lay Road has got our street sign on it.
Yes, it has.
It looks like to me it's been pretty well-maintained.
So James, can you point to the property line again?
Property line for National Guard?
Yeah.
It's here in black.
In the black box.
The black line?
How about the property in back of the armory? James, isn't there a property adjacent to them that they could use for the expansion?
If you look at this footprint right here?
Yeah.
And you go to...
They're not expanding.
This is the existing conditions. This is the wooded area that you see.
Yeah.
This is the road. So this is the same as that black imprint right there.
Okay, so they had the wooded area.
Back there. Yeah, it's just...
They're not expanding their acreage. They're just reconfiguring it.
And they're gonna build...
They're just basically controlling their perimeter.
Right. And they're gonna build a new training facility in the back?
Right. You see that small building's demoed. This is replaced. This is the existing Reddiness Centers. There's expansion here. Training that was happening here moves over. Private parking, and this is expanded vehicle parking for the military vehicles.
So they could have capped that road off in time, in the last 50 years they wanted to.
They could, and that's right.
Well, what we can do about it is take up for the business owners and their employees and let them know that we're opposed to it.
Somewhere to put in another road in there.
There's another wooded area in there, too.
Another way to cut another road in there, to the east or the west.
Well, if it is, I want them to bear the cost, not the city.
Which way?
Even if...
The government?
Yeah, the government.
I would say that this is a federal project, and like most federal projects, there's a process, so there's a time. You have to environmental documents. All the money doesn't always come at one time, so there's time for us to do some of these things that we're working on as far as any improvements to Ballard Road, the crossing and those things. And if that's an interim step to a larger plan, there's time to actually work through all these issues as we coordinate with the National Guard, so.
Well, once again, I think the first thing we need to do is find out why the business owners are being told something by the guard and we're being told something else.
James, you're talking to both sides? You're talking to the businesses and the National Guard?
Calls started coming in from the businesses last week, then I met Councilman Moody with the businesses, sort of mini-town hall meeting. But for the most part, our contact has been primarily that initial when the project's introduced to us, the National Guard. And up until we started receiving phone calls, we didn't know that the word had gotten out.
Okay. Would you continue to facilitate communication between the two? Make sure everybody's...
Everybody's got a letter from the business owners, along with the signatures and their concerns in front of you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next item is a briefing on our flood plain management, and this will be very brief. The objective is to get lower flood insurance premiums for our residents.
We're not gonna use a PowerPoint. I think there's been enough pictures of flooding, the paper, and news.
I think it'll be, and I'm mad.
We actually began in 1973, the flood plain program, to facilitate a reduction in premiums. We began the rating system program in 1999. Communities that are doing more, it's a point system, the more points you get, the lower premiums the residents in that community have to pay. We've been participating since 2005. We brought to you a list of individuals that you put on our flood plain program committee in 2005. That committee was used again in 2010. And this year, we have partnered with the Army Corps of Engineers, and the Army Corps of Engineers is helping us rewrite, so we're getting a larger pool of information to put in the plan, more ideas nationwide. But we would like to expand that so that we can be bringing in our partners from not only the city, but from the state agencies, DOD, shipyard, naval base, I mean, the hospital, Coast Guard, be bringing in media relations, and then bring in citizens from all over the city to be providing input as we develop this plan. Now, the benefit, we can get a plan that's open to the public, of course. Right now, we're Class 9. It means everybody gets a 5 percent reduction if you're in a hazard zone. That amounts to about $187,000. That's coming in right now. That's the latest figures. But with the new premiums that have gone into effect that we briefed you on in March, that probably could grow to about $300,000 just by being a 5 percent reduction. Our goal is, once the plan's adopted, we gain additional points with this committee and other activities we're doing. We hope to go to a 10 percent reduction when we reapply next year, and then our goal is to go to a 15 percent reduction in the years to come. We feel like that. That would be a significant premium reduction to the citizens. By having this committee, and we'll be getting a list of names to you very quickly, we would be able to just about double points in some of our aspects. So it is a fairly significant group, and at the same time, getting input and ideas that may bring us points in other ways.
Would these reductions be automatic? Would citizens ever have to do anything?
All we do is, we make the application, we reapply every year, and the reduction is automatically applied to those properties in the hazard zone. If you're not in a hazard zone, but you're living close to it, and you've decided to get the insurance anyway, just to be doubly safe, you don't get that reduction.
You don't.
But if you are in a hazard zone, you do get it. And with the number of properties, we feel that are going to go into the hazard zone with the new maps, as we mentioned back in June, that this is going to be a significant change, and this program could assist those people with their reductions in premiums.
So what we're gonna do, we're gonna send you a structure for the committee with some recommendations of its composition, and we'll put it on a future council meeting so we can go ahead and populate the committee.
Very good.
This is a good deal.
Thanks, Ray.
Sounds good.
All right. James, you have on your agenda tonight amendment to the city code that deals with economic development primarily and stormwater management. And we're recommending that you amend the code to allow for the purchase of nutrient credits from outside the city.
Good on us.
Good evening.
Here's our ADA.
As John mentioned, this amendment to the ordinance involves the off-site purchase nutrient credits outside of the city boundaries to help sites achieve their water quality requirements. Let's go through this, give you a little bit of background. In late 2011, the General Assembly adopted what's referred to as the Integration Bill. It combines the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act Program, ENS Program, the Stormwater Program, with the idea that you would gain efficiencies and also be able to do more for water quality. State has a role in our local program. Basically, they do program review, permit issuance, enforcement. They offer guidance and technical assistance. As far as the local program goes, it's our job to implement and enforce a new stormwater program and to enforce the state's general construction permit. The main thing to take from this slide is that everything that we had to do to get our program in place had to be done by July 1, 2014. From this slide, you can see that state's still rolling out guidance to us. All the guidance that they're providing to us is not complete. The last General Assembly session, they actually revised some of the regulations. The program is still evolving, yet we have to have our program up and running once again July 1, 2014.
Who was that saying?
Off-site stormwater compliance has been around for a while. It was typically most seen in the wastewater section and agricultural section for those people to be able to assess their nutrient reduction requirements for their type of projects. You typically see it in the wastewater treatment places where you saw it a lot. But this is totally new for the stormwater sector. This is how our existing ordinance reads. We do allow off-site stormwater compliance. However, that compliance needs to be done within the city boundaries. This new ordinance, this amendment, will allow those developments to achieve those reductions outside of our boundaries. The reason for this ordinance is you have some physically constrained sites within the city, specifically if you look to look at our downtown areas. This gives them another design tool to meet their water quality requirements, thereby promoting development, and it still remains consistent with state code. The potential impact is seeing how the state's still rolling out guidance, changing regulations from time to time. We don't know the full impact that it may have on us. We're a, we have a permit, but we also permit folks. And so how that intermingling of being a permutee and someone who does permits, we're not sure how that's gonna play out. However, this all goes back to the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, total maximum daily load, and in that, in achieving those nutrient deductions for that program, there's some non-traditional BNP's such as enhanced street sweeping and tree planting that we're planning on doing anyway for our own cause, and so if we do have to make up anything, it would just make sense for us to go ahead and ramp up those programs. And so there's an environmental benefit and a development benefit that goes along with this, that goes along with this ordinance amendment. So in summary, we're gonna allow for off-site treatment outside of our boundaries in hopes that it'll give development another tool and still remain consistent with state code. There may be some impacts, but with increased environmental programs and the boon to development, we hope that they'll sort of even out. That I'll take any questions.
We want to make sure that you're comfortable with this.
We need them.
I love those nutrient tech credits.
All right. The next is a update on Paradise Creek Park.
Good evening. Vice Mayor. Want to give you a brief update on the Paradise Creek project? Can y'all see that, or I don't need to put it up? Yes. As you know, the park opened in June 28, 2013, the grand opening here. And since that time, we've had a lot of different programs that we do in collaboration with Elizabeth River Project, who's our partner with this. This is the Hampton Roads team. They're ambassadors at the park, and they actually come in, clean up all the old lines, clean the parks for us. This is actually a fishing program we had for this young man. He was gonna eat that fish, but we didn't let him. We have preschool programs at the park now. Other thing I want to show you. This is the rendering for the new playground we're gonna do at the park. As you know, phase one of the park was to redo another green parking lot, and then the part two of that was to do an education pavilion. The second phase is to actually do a playground and to do an ADA kayak and boat launch at the park. So what's going to happen is that the bid for this will go out at the end of this month. It should be awarded by October. We'll start construction in November, and by spring of 2015, the park will be done. Now, this is being funded by grant funds, so the Elizabeth River Project is paying 168,000 of that. We have a grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the other half, so for approximately $460,000, that's what it's gonna cost to build the education pavilion, a learning lab, new parking lot, ADA kayak launch. And the only indebtedness the city has on this, and we planned for this, is about $125,000. That's all it's gonna cost us. Okay? Wonderful. One of the things that happens here is that this picture here, that is actually I C Norcom High School. They actually grow our wildflowers that we plant at Paradise Creek Park, so they grow the flowers for us. Here, the preschool program, we have a preschool education program in all of the preschool programs in Portsmouth City Public Schools. So they help us actually grow our flowers. And then this is a picture of our engineer at the park, and one of the preschoolers actually planting the flowers they grew. And here, this young man came in from a preschool in Virginia Beach because they love Paradise Creek Park so much. So that's him and his mom actually visiting the park. And we know who these customers are. Do you know this family right here?
They recognize the mayor.
That looks like the mayor and his crew there at the park. So part of the project was actually that beautiful map you see behind that. That was actually part of the project funding to get that to people could learn about the park. This, in the last month, we actually have, thank you, Mr. Rowe, we actually did a grand opening again and had scientists come in. We found 200 different species of plant life at Paradise Creek Park. So the park is very well-used and very active. The new playground that we're gonna build, if you can see this, this is the new education pavilion that's gonna go in, okay? These are new stepping stumps here, garden benches. This is a labyrinth where you can go in, actually go through like a maze until you find your way out. So everything in the park...
Where's the bridge in relation to that? The bridge on that?
Oh, there.
Is that to the upper right?
That's the upper right.
Okay.
And then the actual wetland learning lab is being paid for by Dominion, Virginia Dominion Power. They're actually paying for that for us. And then the playground itself, the Elizabeth River Project has already raised $25,000 to help offset the cost of the playground. So it's a really good collaborative effort with Elizabeth River Foundation and the city of Portsmouth. We've had some great sponsors come in and help us with the cost of this, so just wanted to give you an update on that. So it should be done by spring of 2015. Does anybody have any questions?
Just in general, what are we roughly spending over there, John, in man-hours? I know we, part of our partnership in this whole piece was to take over the park once they opened it, and then we would have our folks over there cleaning and all that. What are we spending roughly?
Let us quantify that and send it to you.
Okay. It'll be good.
I mean, this is really a good deal for the city. We're getting all this park, and it's been funded by others.
And the educational component with all of our kids and schools and everybody playing a part, I mean, it's great.
This year, the Portsmouth Public Schools actually have an ecology class that is part of the curriculum for 5th graders that actually takes place at Paradise Creek. So it's an awesome... So it's an awesome partnership, it really is.
How's attendance been?
So far, we've had, go through the park, 6,780 kids. 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 That's not counting the adults, but then the education programs. And part of the thing that I gave you in your handout is actually a breakdown of all the different programs and things that the parks are doing. So if you're very interested in going by there to see what's going on, please stop by the park.
I think we hit one of the largest crowds ever with the Walk with the Mayor. We had quite a few people that showed up, and we stopped at different educational points and allowed Marjorie and her folks to update the public on that park. It worked out well.
All right.
That's great.
All right. Thank you so much.
How about the fish? Do we know what else is coming through there? I know every once in a while, we take that net and put in there to find out what's coming. Clownder and shrimp. I've heard a whole lot of.
Pines and stuff. The thing that we've seen a lot of lately are foxes.
We haven't had shrimp in a long time. And I mean, back up in that area. And it shows what the cleaning is doing because, I mean, there's actual boaters out there fishing right outside of that channel there, and that hasn't, I haven't seen it in all my life. So it was, thank you very much. Good job.
All right. The next item we're going to cover is this right here. Our draft legislative program for the 2015 session of the General Assembly. And this is a draft. We need your input. We'll be bringing this back to you in October for adoption. Sure.
Good evening. I'm with the council. It's time of year again.
What are they going to pull this year? Just checking.
So I'm going to just kind of go over our draft with you, some items for a state legislative package. I'll highlight a few policy issues that the Virginia Municipal League will be considering for their package, and then we can consider our next steps. We had four state legislative requests that kind of ramped the flagpole and looked at to see their viability. First one was recurrent flooding mandate disclosure. Heard a lot about flooding already. There's a lot of studies and things that's going on. This year, the General Assembly put together a joint subcommittee to look at recurrent flooding and nuisance flooding and to come up with some recommendations for the General Assembly. The legislative request here would be that creation of another statute in the code that would mandate real estate disclosure of flooding incidents to potential buyers. We've kind of floated this out there to a few agencies and things that are working in this area and have interest in this area. We've gotten some good buy-ins so far. So it looks like this might be something that we can go forward with. The next one would deal with the Board of Zoning Appeals. This would be a change in the code section that will provide the City of Portsmouth the same ability that Virginia Beach has to select their members. At this point in time, where the code reads is that the circuit court judge, his designate is the one that puts in the members to the Board of Appeals. Problem has been in Portsmouth recently that the judges do not keep a list of candidates. So when there are vacancies, we haven't been able to fill them in a quick manner. So by doing this, we were able to get it, the enforcement would be, the city council would be able to select his members to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The next two deal with the treasurer's office and the ability for third-party collectors to be able to recruit their costs for collections, strain on collection on local taxes, and also for payment of administrative costs and et cetera. Third-party collectors are used, and right now, they're not able to recoup their charges. So those changes in the code for those two would allow them to be able to recruit the So that's the four that we have.
Jimmy Williams is here tonight, and I don't know, Jimmy, do you want to say anything about this?
Basically, what we're trying to do, we do have a contract with outside collectors that do help us collect. They are, of course, entitled to that 20% collection fee, as we know by state code. But there have been instances where they haven't been able to recover costs such as towing or storage and so forth. Of course, if they do restrain a vehicle for non-payment of taxes, then they have to store this. And of course, to store it, they have to have insurance, and they incur cost. So there have been situations where they haven't been able to recover those costs. Mike Paluso, attorney on my staff, an assistant to the city attorney, has had some dealings with our outside collector and the contractor and so forth. And this would just enhance, because we don't want to infringe on his ability to help us collect the delinquent taxes and other charges, not just be, not just your towing program and your booting program. This is any and all other third-party collections that he may do for us. Mike, you have anything you want to add?
The primary purpose of this, again, the code does foresee a treasurer using a third-party to outsource collections that generally is like letter writing or phone calling. The code does not really foresee a treasurer using a third-party to seize an asset. And that third-party gets their collection commission, but when it comes to recovering storage bills or tow bills, particularly when there's a lien holder. If we seize a vehicle and the lien holder wants to redeem it, then the issue is, is the lien holder pay the storage bill and the tow bill. This would clarify state law to allow the third-party to recover the impound fees as, in quote, the tax debt. This would help our office, obviously, by making it more cost-effective for our third-party to seize the address.
And I think the point he's making is when there is another lien on the property that we have seized, that lien holder is not willing and wanting to pay the storage and tow fee, as he said. And that can be a negative to us collective because a lot of, obviously, vehicles that we do end up having to seize do have liens on them from lenders. That's really a big thrust on it. The Treasurers Association will be submitting this also, but I asked Sherri to include it in the city's package because it's, bottom line, very, very important to y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The state public policy items, these are generally going to be cyclical in nature. We usually have policy statements that we include in our legislative packages. Again, there are items that we've been dealing with for the last several years to continue to deal with, minimizing budget cuts to the localities, fighting against the elimination of the B-pole and MMT taxes, any restructuring that's being done unless we're made whole, and the other items on the list as well. Virginia Municipal League, the legislative committee is going to be meeting on Friday, and they're going to go over the positions that their policy committees have given them on various items. Listed here are some of the items that they'll be considering and whether to support or oppose these various items. And the legislative committee will make their decision and determination on Friday as to which ones are going to actually go into the legislative package. Moving on in the interest of time, 2015 legislative package. Again, the federal government doesn't move to the same beat as the General Assembly, as we all know. So, yeah. So a lot of these issues listed here are also going to be cyclical. We've been standing, we've been pushing them, but we've been weighing in on them, monitoring them over the last year or so, the sequestration, defense cuts, further cuts to CBDG at home. At the very end, you see this one, the Tiger Grant, Treslin Bridge resubmission. I found out today, unfortunately, we did not get the Tiger Grant. So we'll submit and still continue to look for funds for that particular project. These are some other items for the federal public policy issues to follow, including our tax reform, transportation reform, and empowerment zone extenders, which has been very helpful to the City of Portsmouth in its easy zones. So the 2015 General Assembly session, here are some key dates that we're going to be working with. The pre-filing legislation actually began in July, ends in December. Hopefully, that we can have a legislative package adopted by council by the last meeting in October. I highlight the fact that the governor will be meeting with the joint money committees in December on the 17th, and that's when he'll make his presentation on what cuts or amendments he's going to do to the 2016 budget, and the rest of them is self-explanatory. Moving forward to your next steps, finalize the city's 2015 state and federal legislative packages. I discussed these with you, getting an input from you on other items that you might be interested in, deciding on having your pre-session, when you're going to have your pre-session meeting with your Portsmouth delegation members, and adoption of the packages.
We're going to be putting it on our website, Sherri, so we can get public input like we did last year.
Yes, ma'am.
Sherri does a wonderful job. I'm not so sure about all of our paid lobbyists. I would like at some future time or maybe some other briefing that you could send us who they are and what they do and what they cost.
Thank you.
I'm not, I don't know enough about them to be thrilled with them, and I think I should be thrilled with them.
I'd be thrilled with Ben. He's pretty good. I don't know who else we got, but Ben's, you get Christmas cards from him every once in a while.
All right. We need your input. Put this on the website, and we'll have it back on October 28 for your consideration. Sherri mentioned that the EML, EML conference is October 5 through 7. It's going to be in Rono. This is where their package, our package will come together, the EML package.
John, one of the things before leaving that, because it was something that Sherri does a beautiful job of doing, and she's always done that, is to keep us abreast of what is happening with Virginia Forest Cities and what's happening all around in the area. And that's one of the things I don't think we keep up with as much as members on the council. And it was one of the things that I used to do, was traveling up and down the road so that we were always on top of the issues that would have an impact on what's happening within our cities. And a lot of times, we don't go outside of our cities to find out what's going on in the other cities. And when you go into those group meetings, you really broaden your base of knowledge and you understand, we know you're all very bright and everything, but there are so many things that are going on in other cities that we can capitalize on that would enhance the quality of life for the citizens in our cities if we think outside of our box. And I'm going to be leaving so I can see it, because I've watched it happen. We can't grow staying where we are. We need to look outside of our box and see what other people are doing, even in spite of limited resources, to enhance the quality of life for the citizens that we live and work with every day. And I think sometimes we confine ourselves to our own little box, and we don't branch out to find out. And many of you who go to other meetings and meet with people around the state, you will find out there are many opportunities. And I just commend you with what has happened out at the Hoffer Creek, because that was a pot of gold that we had ignored for years, and many cities were capitalizing on those areas. And I'm going to be leaving, but I'm going to still be out there making a joy for no one and looking at things that we could do a better job with just looking at what's happening in downtown, what's happening in Cavalier Manor. Look at our city as a whole. We've always talked about the Portsmouth family. Let's practice what we preach and teach. We are family, and we are concerned about all parts of the city, not where you live, where I live, where someone else lives, but all of us. If we are truly family, let's practice what we preach and teach to our young children who will be our future. And I just had to see it, because I don't see enough of it.
Thank you. And that was a good team together, Ms. Randall and Sherri.
We went all up and down this road, all over the state.
I think that's what she was trying to say.
That's right.
Sherri did the driving.
I rode and did the talking. I made the joyful noise, and she taught me how to do it.
Sherri scoots up. She passed you one more, and I looked, and I was like, Sherri!
Got a lead foot.
That's right.
She was going the speed limit. I think it was 78.
She moved.
Some of us never leave.
Put your hands over here.
We're up at New Kit, 75, 70 speeds.
All right. We need to give you a little update on our comprehensive plan. Bob?
We have some activity that's going to take place in October that you need to be aware of. We have a survey that's being done, and Bob's going to give you the background for this.
Good evening. I'll be brief, continuing our environmental theme for the night. I think, as you're aware, in the city of Norfolk and in HRPDC's legislative package background, 2011 requested the General Assembly do some analysis of recurrent flooding in the tidal region. VIMs was assigned to prepare a report that I was completed and delivered to the General Assembly in 2012. And as a result of that, the General Assembly modified state code relating to comprehensive plans, and we're required to take into consideration the guidance from VIMs in terms of coastal resource management and sea level rise. While the General Assembly doesn't generally like to talk about sea level rise, it is mentioned in the requirements for us. So as we get ready to do our comprehensive plan update, which we're laying foundation work for, this will be the first time the city's ever had to do, you know, sea level rise out there. So we're trying to lay a pretty strong foundation for it in the years to come. We're going to continue to be dealing with sea level rise issues. So in doing that, we are partnered with Virginia, we back up. In doing that, we started to put together a process for how we're going to be doing the mapping and how we wanted to be taking a look. And I think as most, you know, if you look at most of the, most of the sea level rise conversations, you see the people talking about structures, talking about buildings, talking about, you know, the extent of where sea level rise, storm surge is going to be. Well, we want to get a little bit more involved with the people who are actually going to be impacted by these things and get a baseline level of information regarding the citizens, of course, for their knowledge of sea level rise flooding. So we're contracting with the Virginia Modeling Simulation Center. They are going to be conducting a citizen survey. I know council unit is always concerned about making sure these things are scientifically valid. Once again, this is going to be a sizable sample. It's going to be 1,800 households that will be contacted by the survey. These will be trained surveyors. They'll be managed through the ODU, through VMAS and ODU. We are still finalizing the survey questions, but the surveys are expected to start. We're still tentative, we'll say around October the 13th. These will be conducted during weekdays, afternoons and evenings. This will continue from October 13 through the first week of December. So just make sure you're aware of getting a call from any of your constituents, like who's calling me and asking me all these questions about what I know about flooding. We're also looking at people's, what we call individual mitigation strategies. What do people do? And it's, some of the work that VMAS has been doing, pretty interesting in tracking what people say they're going to do when a storm is going to arrive, which one of these other issues we get into, what they actually do. And they've done some surveys, actually pre and post-storm events, to find out if people do what they say they're going to do. Pretty informative. We're trying to get what I'll call a social baseline. What are the citizens of the city know? What are they aware of? How do they react in terms of these storm events as we move forward? So I just want to give you a heads up on that. There'll be more to come on this, but this is really one of the first steps we'll be taking in dealing with the sea level rise issue as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned. From a modeling standpoint, from a level standpoint, I think you've heard enough from Fred to find out kind of where we are, current situation. We've got a lot of good data that's now become available for us to use, establishing baseline for this year. The VMAS standard we'll look at will be, I believe it's a foot and a half of sea level rise, three feet of storm surge. That's sort of the standard the General Assembly says we must look at. We will also be looking at something probably a little bit more than that, because we want to sort of establish what would be, what I'll call, probably not the right phrase, but kind of a worst-case scenario. In other words, if the VIM study was too conservative, we would like to take a little bit more aggressive look at part of this modeling. bit more aggressive, look for this modeling exercise we're doing. So anyway, just want to give you a heads up on that in the event you get any contact from anyone, and we'll keep you posted as the results come in.
Okay. Questions? Good job.
Any questions so far? Mike? I'd like to give you a report of a conversation that took place today, a conference call pertaining to an American vessel, a ship, the Cape Ray. You may recall that it was sent to the Middle East on a very important mission. That mission is complete and it's coming home.
Good. We had a, of course, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor and Council. We had the opportunity to get involved with the conference call with the Maritime Association, the Defense Threat Reduction Agency, and locals. That included EVMS, Maryview Hospital had representatives on the call, and it's talking about the Cape Ray coming back. Now, if you remember, it was tasked with going and taking care of the Syrian stockpile of chemical weapons. It did that, it finished that on August the 18th. At that time, it started cleaning up. It took the effluent, the remainder of, as they got rid of it, and they got rid of 100% first time it's ever done. They picked up the chemicals in Italy and then went into international waters and destroyed them. It then took the effluent and went to Finland, and they took portions of it, and Germany took portions of the leftovers. They then had cleaned up. They've now met the CDC requirements, the EPA requirements for that vessel. They had no spills during the process of doing away with the chemical weapons, and the ship will come back in on the 15th of this month, that afternoon. It'll come into port. There'll be a recognition, they planned for a recognition of the crew because of the effort that they did, and this was an historic event. So they cleaned up the ship. As far as it's concerned, it'll take about 45 days once it's in port, and then it'll go back into the ready reserve fleet. They're going to have to disassemble the two components that they put on the ship to help destroy the weapons, the nuclear weapons, I mean, the chemical weapons, and that's about where they left it. They will do some debris, they will have a few chemicals that will be in sealed drums that they were unused that were not chemical weapons, but the chemicals they used to neutralize the chemical weapons. Those will be sealed and those will be taken off the ship. That's the basic.
Where is the vessel going? Back to the pier or?
Back to Earl Industries where it's set.
Same pier it was?
It's set right there, yes.
So everything will be done there, the demodifications and all that stuff?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Matt.
Good. Yusuf? We have a offer that, from ERC, that we want to tell you about. They're going to do some paving of streets that are not really in their system, so to speak. ERC being...
That's what Trevor Cross is. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. The offer is for ERC to pave a couple of hour ramps that connect the tunnel to Effingham that section.
Do you all have individual maps in front of you?
Yeah. If you'll take a look at this, you want to do this one first, coming off of Effingham going to...
This one is coming the other way, is from Effingham to the ramp, through the ramp to the tunnel. It would start at the Effingham intersection on the ramp coming around all the way to the tunnel. And...
Including the piece that comes out downtown the Port Center?
Yeah, up to here to the, where the stop sign is just about.
Okay.
And the other section is coming out of the tunnel.
Yep.
And here's YMCA, coming out of the tunnel and coming to Effingham.
Okay.
All the way. And the paving is going to take place next month. There's a possibility that they could start the last month of this, the last week of this month.
Yusuf?
Have we factored in what the disruption might be there with the rush hour traffic and all, especially along those two areas because that's where our bottlenecks are?
What we are looking at doing is, and we're still discussing everything, all the paving, everything's going to happen at night, and we're looking at paving this area, hopefully when they close westbound lanes at night. It's going to take about two nights to do the whole project.
One in the middle and then one to lay it down.
That's not bad.
I see they just put new lights up there also?
Yes, sir.
It doesn't have none out. It is dark as Airbus now.
No, not anymore. They got lights up. I just went through their last light.
That was great. Thanks for fixing that for me.
No, actually, during the, during our talks, the President Greg came by the office and shared all of the lighting and things that they were going to do out in that area about a few months ago. So, yeah, it was good, especially right there where our welcome to Portsmouth LED sign is. So all of that is lit up.
I highly recommend...
When are they going to start that? What timeframe you're looking at, Yusuf?
Approximately after the 20th of this month into next month. We don't have an exact time yet, but it's coming up.
Yusuf, Nita, and I went on a tour of the Midtown Tunnel project, and I highly recommend that if you get a chance to take the tour, and if you want, you've been on it, Bill?
Yeah.
It'll give you a good understanding of the project and the impact that it's going to have. So if you're interested in a tour, let me know, and we'll try to set it up for you. All right, we have a... Yes, ma'am.
Before leaving that, because there's been a concern that I've had, and it's old lady, I can speak my concerns, you know. At that Effingham Street YMCA, and that has been a concern, and I raised it years ago, with the traffic, with people who walk and try to cross, and that at one time, they were talking in terms of a walk across so that you wouldn't get tied up in that bottleneck right there with the church and the Y, the tunnel came out and everything else. There was some discussion about it, and it does impact the attendance that utilizes that Y. And that Y has an historic nature in the city of Portsmouth. And I'm praying that the legacy of what that Y was all about will not leave because that was a place, the only place that we had for our young children to go was right there, and it's right across from the historic Church Bishop. It's a historic section in the history of the city, and I don't want us to lose sight of that part because it has a major impact on what happened in our city from that point on. And there, it's a way to disconnect from what it was all about, and that was before they ever did anything down the lower end. And I guess as I'm getting older, I'm saying, what's happening to the past? We can bring the future, but let's not throw away the past history of what took place in that part of our city, and I'm a history person.
All right. Perfect.
Council ladies on reports?
Anything else? Anybody got any reports? Let me just say before, it's almost 7:00. I met about a week and a half ago with the President of Norfolk State University. He actually came over here, gave a real nice briefing on a lot of the issues that they were wrestling with over there and some of the financial things that they were taking care of, and I thought it was very bold of him. I later found out, talking to some of the other mayors, that he's actually going throughout the region, trying to talk with each city about strengthening the partnership, and we talked a great deal about our pathways and a lot of our students coming from Portsmouth Public Schools and TCC going to Norfolk State. So I look forward to, hopefully, we can bridge some type of better relationship with that university because, as you know, the financial needs over there and some of the challenges there, we can't afford to lose that because we've got a great deal of our kids going to that. So I thought that was very good on his part. And tomorrow, I'll be heading to Richmond. The governor, speaking of sea level rise, has reconstituted, I think, two administrations ago, the Climate Change and Resiliency Commission, and he asked me to serve on it, and tomorrow's our first meeting. About a month ago, there was a huge conference over at Old Dominion. We had people there from the city. Senator Warner and King were some of the co-sponsors there, and it's amazing the crowd that was there. I mean, there's been this huge debate of whether or not climate change exists or not. If you'd have been over at that conference about a month ago and seen the place, it was standing room only. I think Fred was there with three or four of our folks there from the city, and I was there, and it is a huge discussion in cities like Portsmouth, Norfolk, Pecoson, Hampton, with flooding and all of those things. Those things are real, and so I'll be heading up to Richmond tomorrow to sit on that commission and see what some of the outcomes will be. Molly Ward, y'all all know her from Mayor, former Mayor of Hampton, is going to be spearheading it for the governor, and hopefully, we can get this thing back on center stage where we talk about that. I mean, the first thing that came up at the conference was, I think, one of the senators might have asked, how much money would it cost? And, I mean, you could have heard a pin drop because it is astronomical what we would need to do to build a wall or something similar to that, but anyway, I just thought that was worth throwing up. Any other reports?
I attended the PPIC meeting last week, but I think Andrew, Mayor, covered pretty much what that presentation was about, but I also met members of the PPIC out of the former School Operations Center and toured the property out there that...
Burton's Point.
Burton's Point property with members of the PPIC, so that was about it.
Okay. All right. We're done. Let's get in. Thank you. We should be hitting the gap. Yes, ma'am.
We're going right on in.
Going straight in.